A council meeting to order, please rise for the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance. Our Father.
Who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
The Lord's kingdom, power, and glory.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item D on the agenda is swearing in Fire Chief Dave Bowen.
Let's get everybody in. They can make their, they're coming through.
Okay, okay. You, Dave, you volunteered for two leadership challenges right off the bat. You're now a leader of peers, and that is not easy to do. A month ago, you were Dave. When we get done, you're going to be chief. It's a little different. That's a tough leadership challenge to do. The beautiful part about it is you got somebody back there that just did this not that long ago, and he helped guide you. The other good thing you're doing is you're taking over a good organization. That is tough to do. It's easier to take a bad organization and make it good than to keep a good organization and make it great, and that's what you're going to do. And you're going to do that because of the training stuff that you love and you do. Not to mention the fact that all the training facilities we have here in the building for you. The Green Place, all the stuff out there, a great training area for you to make sure our people, your people, are ready to go. So the bell rings, training's done, it's time for act, and you know it better than I do. And you know, and you know the steps that you gotta train just as good as anybody else out here. And everybody out here that's here for you, like I said, we've soaked in a little bit. Because all these people are here for you. Some of these people are brand new to this, and they're going to realize how many people are going to leave here. Right? But I gotta tell you, if you're on the pledge and having that many people said it, that was pretty cool for me. I'm going to tell you that right now. That's pretty cool. So, number one, congratulations. Training. Soaked us in. You know, we talked on Saturday real quick. Chief Bowen and I took a little time, had a little breakfast on Saturday morning, and he said that after he got the call, he talked to his wife and said, I don't know if I'm up for this. We know you're up for this, and you know you're up for this, right? And everybody in here is going to help you make sure you're the best possible chief you can be. That's what they earn, and that's what you're going to do. All right, you ready to go?
Yes, sir.
All right. We're going to do this. We'll let you say a little few words after that, okay? Are you ready to? I state your name.
I, David Bowen.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Ohio?
The state of Ohio.
And the Charter of this city?
And the Charter of this city.
And I'll faithfully discharge?
I'll faithfully discharge.
According to the law?
According to the law.
In the best of my ability?
In the best of my ability.
The duties of fire chief?
The duties of fire chief.
Which I've been appointed.
Which I've been appointed.
We need to come to this first.
Let's get it over here. Sure, you good?
I'm good.
You good?
I'm good.
You want to get in here?
I'm good.
Okay, anybody else?
What was yours, chief?
I'll make it short and sweet. They say it takes a village. First off, the four people standing behind me, I wouldn't be where I am today without you. But more importantly, the people out here, all of you have had an impact on my life in one way or another. From my first volunteer department, to my career department that I'm leaving, to the career department that I'm going to lead. I thank you all very much, and this was with much love, that I'm standing here today in support from all of you. So, thank you. We'll do that. Everybody that's here that wants pictures, let's go back to the fire station so they can continue their meeting, and we'll do it in front of the rigs.
We can continue with you.
Yeah, I'll get a, yeah, we'll do a shot with council.
Yeah, sure.
Ashley, you want up here? You good? Come on, Billy. You never know, you might be, you know, they could be asking trouble somebody.
They're telling someone to go.
You guys come forward this side of your panel about a step. You guys stay fine, they're going to go. Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. This is going to be your first picture on the wall in the hall.
Yeah! I like that. You guys getting good? Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Nobody was carrying the torch.
Okay, moving on to item E, Napoleon Public Library Board Presentation in regard to ballot issue. Welcome. Come up to the podium there, and if you could introduce yourself, please.
My name is Jason Kreider. I am the current Napoleon Library Foundation President. And we're here today to, I think you all have a little brochure there in front of you, and I apologize if some of you may have already heard this little presentation before, but oh, well. The, the library has been looking for the last probably five years at doing some renovations on the Carnegie Library. We have, Carnegie Library is, the library itself has been in service to the, to the public here for about 100 years. And we have, the Carnegie Library itself was built in, in 1915, and then served as the library until the 60s, when it moved to its current location. There was an addition in the 90s, and then it's allowed us to serve, serve the public. But in the last 10 years, we've had a 70% increase in circulation, as well as technology assistance, computer usage, Wi-Fi, hotspots, all those kind of good things that you don't necessarily think about as just checking out books, but all the other things that happen. In the last year, we've had 21,500 visitors to the library, which includes 167,000 items checked out, 6,000 instances of computer usage. It's kind of not necessarily 6,000 different people, but 6,000 people, times that the computers have been used. We have 354 programs, which were attended by about 7,300 kids and adults. And what this means is, is that we've run out of room. We have lots of space that, we have programs going on, but you're interrupting the patrons who want to go check out a book, or vice versa. And so, again, as I said, the, the Board of Trustees has been looking to expand and renovate the Carnegie Library. I think if you could pop ahead here a little bit. This kind of isn't a very big picture, but you can see, this is kind of what we're proposing to do, which is to connect the two buildings with a, with a connector, and then renovate the, renovate the library, the Carnegie Library itself. Building itself has been in, kept in very good condition. It just needs to be updated with, you know, new heating and air, put in an elevator, because there are two floors there. And then get rid of all the 70s wood paneling and things like that, that don't really look all that attractive anymore, so. I think if you flip to the next, next page there. Yep, there's a little bigger picture of it, so, and then go to the next one. In the brochure, you will see a kind of small drawing of, when you open it up, there's kind of a rendering of what we're kind of looking to do, which is, there are two floors to the library, if you've never been in it. The top floor will be more open space and allow you to have larger, larger activities there. While the bottom floor, we're going to divide up into a conference room, meeting room, as well as some private students, private study rooms and tutor rooms, and then the mechanicals and bathrooms, and things like that. What we're in the process of doing now is actually raising the money. The Board of Trustees of the library has earmarked around $800,000 to, from their building funds, to put towards the project. As the foundation chair, I'm in charge of raising roughly 100, or 1.2 million dollars. And then this is where, again, part of the reason that we're here tonight is to talk about, just to let you know as informational, not only what we're doing, but then also there's going to be a levy that's going to be on the, on the ballot in May. It's going to be, well, I'll let my dad talk about that since he's with the trustees.
I'm Steve Kreider, and I'm part of the Board of Trustees of the library. And as Jason said, this is a kind of a dual-purpose project. As the Capitol stack over here shows from our consultant, the library board has set aside $800,000 for the project through good conservative work over the years and saving money and operating. We then will work at, and are in the process of raising 1.2 through a philanthropic activity. And then come May, we have, are going to have, there will be a ballot initiative for a half a mil levy to be put on the ballot. It's on the ballot, will be voted on by the public. It is totally separate from what the school may be doing, even though as a library, we have to receive the approval of the school board, kind of a state mandated thing where as a, as a non-elected Board of Trustees, we can't just willy-nilly go out and put a levy on for, to raise funds. It has to be approved by some elected official in some fashion. And so, the school gave us permission to put it on the ballot. It's going to be a half a mil. And just a little history of this, going back to 1948 is the first time that a millage was put on by the library. It became permanent as a one-mil permanent levy in 1989, and at that time raised about $400,000. And if you know how levies work, that means that, that dollar figure keeps going down each year as the reevaluations occur. So today, that one mil that is permanent, which can't be changed and can't be altered, generates about $190,000 for us. So this levy that we're proposing, that's on the ballot this, in May, is going to generate about 200,000, and we'll use that as part of the process to provide the 2 million at the bottom of the pyramid there. It'll also help us with ongoing operations and ongoing expenditure for that purpose. So we simply wanted to bring you some information, because again, as people in the community, I won't call you influencers, but you do get questioned once in a while about what in the world is going on. And so you can at least say, this is what it is, and if they, if you don't have the answer, why certainly direct them to Jason or myself or some other member of the board to talk about that. That's the purpose, and that was it.
Three or four weeks ago, I was in a meeting, and Jason and his dad were talking about how it's a separate ballot issue. I was thinking, I was going on the ballot, and I was going to have one yes or no vote for the new building, the operating levy for the school, and this altogether. And through that discussion, it was realized, no, there's three separate things we're going to vote on, and we go to polls in May. I thought that was important information for everybody here to have an idea of that, because again, we'll get questions about it from time to time. So I thought, you know, Jason and his dad would come and visit with us a little bit, and I appreciate you guys taking the time.
There'll be a, my understanding is there'll be a ballot for the levy, ballot for, or a spot for the bond issue, and then the third thing will, separate, again, separate from us, will be the, be the half mil for the, for the library.
When you look at your ballot come in 30 days, because, well, actually, 30 days from last Friday, I think it was, you'll start to see ballots available. The school issue is a major heading of its own with two items, and then this levy for the, for the library is separate.
Does the half mil have a timeframe, or is it permanent?
Oh, it's a permanent.
It's a permanent half mil, okay.
Half mil, yes, yes. Again, the trust, Board of Trustees has been very diligent about using the funds and very conservative in managing the funds. And we hope that that will give us the cushion to carry on for the next 50 years, probably, so. If you haven't been, you know, until about 20 years ago, I'd never been in the old Carnegie building, and you know, it's one of those things where, again, Andrew Carnegie gave away all his money, $9,000 to build that building in 1915. And again, it's been well-maintained, it just is not functional in terms of how we want to use it. And the sketching that we put together where we merged the two buildings, we felt was more efficient for us, simply because you have one entrance, you don't have to have duplicate staff for each building. And the one cool thing, I think, and I'm very near and dear to my heart, is that there's a fireplace in the Carnegie building, and a great place to sit and read and drink a cup of coffee and enjoy the day, so. And, so anyway.
If you go to other communities who've recently renovated their libraries, and, you know, we all have this image of, oh, I'm going to go check out a book. And it's on a Saturday morning, you will stop by this library, and the place will be packed with people. And they're there for whatever program is going on that day. It's really much more than just checking out the book and, you know, kind of the traditional things that we all did as kids. You know, we don't do much research there anymore, but again, all those kind of programs and things. And that's kind of what we would like to see happen, is that that becomes a center for these kind of activities going on in the community.
There is going to be an exterior entrance for a meeting room so that it can be used by the public for purposes other than activities with the library. Have a separate entrance with a kitchen facility and so forth, so it'll be opportunity for that kind of thing as well. Yeah.
Yeah. My concern is, will there be enough parking? Because parking does tend to be an issue right now with the way it's structured. Parking's a little, a little different. Do you guys have a solution to that?
The footprint, that's one of the issues we have to take up with the architect, you know, as we go forward. But that's been one of the concerns that we've heard. And I'm not quite sure how that'll all be configured, but we'll, no doubt, try to take care of that, you know. So, but you're right, nothing worse than not finding a parking lot on a busy day.
Well, it's a problem I hope we have, so.
You know, one time, David, I think, Dr. David, I think one time there's, St. Paul was right there. I think you cross the street one time and go to three or four different churches, which I assume all that church on Sunday morning, so somehow they all figured out how to, how to place the park. What a great problem to have.
Well, yeah, well, the current parking configuration isn't the optimal.
And this will, this will change some of that as well, too.
Right, I'm, I'm just wondering if we'll still have enough. Right. I hope so.
Yep, it's a great question.
If this passes, when would you think the project would start and then finish?
Well, I have the vision, I'm not quite sure, Joe, exactly how it'll function, but if it passes, we start collection in '24, would be the first for the collection. My guess would be that we begin the planning and the, and the laying out. Have construction start sometime in, in '24 with a grand opening in '25 would be kind of my vision, but that may be different than how it actually ends up. You know, I'm ever the optimist.
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
And all we have to hope for is that the cost of building goes down rather than up.
Absolute.
I know that's going to happen.
Oh, my breath will happen.
Thank you for coming in and sharing. All right. Moving on to item F, Approval of Minutes from February 6, 2023, regular council meeting. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the minutes shall stand approved. Hearing none, they stand approved. Item G, Citizen Communication. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address council, anything that's not on the agenda, can step up to the podium. If you're on WebEx, feel free to type in the chat your questions, and we will look at that periodically.
Are we on WebEx?
All right, while you're doing that, I'll proceed.
Yeah, I have no idea to do it.
Item H, Reports from Council Committees. H1, Safety and Human Resource Committee held a special meeting on February 23rd. Dan?
Yeah, at that time, we recommended to council to accept the rates for the Henry County South Joint Ambulance District, Freedom Township, Napoleon Township, Harrison Township, and the Village of Florida. So that will be on the agenda for later today, tonight.
Thank you, Dan. Okay. H2, The Finance and Budget Committee did not meet on February 27, 2023 due to lack of agenda items. H3 is the Technology Committee did not meet on March 6, 2023 due to lack of agenda items. J, Introduction of Ordinances and Resolutions. We have J1, Resolution Number 008-23, a resolution authorizing the execution of a commitment letter relating to American Municipal Power Incorporated, Incorporated's grant application for the smart grid, using edge computing to build the grid resiliency project and declaring an emergency. Good motion.
So moved.
Second. Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. This resolution basically provides support for AMP's GRIP grant program. This program is a $50 million Department of Energy grant that AMP has been encouraged to pursue, and it, it is for all the AMP communities. So what, what this resolution does is commits us to utilizing the funding for AMI, which is Advanced Metering Infrastructure, smart meters, and they will provide real-time readings, remote connect, disconnect, outage monitoring, et cetera. The estimated cost for this program, and this is something Kevin and I were a little concerned about when we asked that this be brought forth in legislation, has changed a little bit. Initially, the cost was going to be $2.99 per meter, per month. That has dropped down to $2.15 per meter, primarily because of program modifications, some firm updates from the vendors. And there's still, while it doesn't take that into consideration in the current cost, there is a large member that is still considering. If indeed they join, then it'll reduce the cost even further. Total cost over 10 years for the city of Napoleon will be $1.69 million. And if we went forth with an AMI program without the grant, it would be closer to $2.94 million for the same infrastructure. So it is a reimbursement, reimbursement grant. AMP fronts all the money, they install the system, and then once it's installed, then we start paying. So we, until, until the infrastructure is there, we're not paying anything. So, but this does, this resolution does then commit us for a 10-year program.
And this is for the electric usage?
Yes, it is.
Would we be able to tie in the water into the system, or is that separate?
What we're being told is because we're going through the grant, and the grant is for electric use only, the initial application would be for the electric. However, we're also being told that it has the capability of gas and water, which we would use the water portion. But the initial installation part would just be for the electric because of, of the grant. I guess it would be a question we ask on how quickly we could add the water to that. But eventually, we could, but I don't know if it's a year after it's installed, or 10 years after installed, or if that. I would tell you this, that would be something that we would be responsible for.
Right.
But everything's already in place to do that, so the purchasing cost is already handled with that.
And there wouldn't be, do you know if there's, when AMP pays for this, and then we start paying them, do they own the system, or do we?
They, they, you want me to go ahead and answer that, Andy?
Sure.
I don't want to step on your toes.
Oh, that's okay.
AMP would, AMP would own the system because it's a reimbursement grant. We would have to think of it as we are leasing the system from them. Once the 10 years are over and everything is paid, the reimbursement has all been, they've been re-upped, because again, they front the money. It has been designed that we would purchase it for no more than a dollar after the 10 years. So in our case, it's just a matter of, they front all the money, the, I'll just round up the $3 million. They get part of it from the grid grant, the other part comes from us for that 10 years on a monthly installment, or at least payment. And then once that has been settled, we buy it for less than a dollar. It has to be that way because it's a reimbursement, and they're fronting all the money.
Would we have an option to pay that, that amount that we're paying over the 10 years sooner to have control?
Yeah.
We, again, we can ask that question. I'm sure that they would, because it's a reimbursement, I can't speak for them, but they probably would be fine with that. But that's something that we could certainly ask with that, too.
And then the other question, if they're going to own it, and we decide we do want to put our water meters attached to it, will there be a charge to them, or that they're going to charge us to add something to their?
I, I don't know if there'd be a charge to them to add to the system, but again, that's something that we can clarify.
Okay. Because just thinking through all these things, if we're going to save, I don't know, I didn't do the math, but a million or more dollars to do this, but then maybe be, have our hands tied on either adding the, the water, or being charged to add the water for nine years because they own it. I just want to make sure that we're not costing ourselves more money.
Well, at this point, the, we were just told that, that could be added, but it can't be until the grant is fulfilled. So when that becomes fulfilled, then I'm sure we can, but timeframe wise, I will check on that for you with that. Because again, this is a grid, electric, electric grid grant, has nothing to do with water or gas, but it will have the capability.
Okay.
I'll clarify that with you.
All right. And when we are... All right, and, um, when we were around some other AMP communities, um, I was kinda asking around, I haven't, I didn't find any that have gone through this yet. Is it because it's so new, or with the, uh, or did I just not meet the right people?
There are certainly communities that have AMI already. I mean, I can get you a list of a few that, if you want to reach out to them to have that done.
That did it through AMP?
That, uh, I know they've had it done, which ones through AMP, I'm not sure.
Okay.
But we could certainly get a list of that also.
That'd be nice to talk to somebody that's already done this and possibly through the same, same way that we're gonna do it, and just check pros and cons.
Certainly.
Because I think the city of Hamilton, didn't they say they were gonna do it, where they're paying the, the Babs dollars back, because those got, uh, sequestered, I mean, with, uh, Senator Brown's staff, right?
Yeah. Thank you, appreciate it.
No problem.
With the, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I was just curious, I can understand how the electrical side would, uh, using AMP and these meters would actually decrease the electrical uses when we're tied up, but how would it, uh, how would it affect the water and the gas? Is it just, uh, economics from reading the meters? Or how would, how would it, uh, how would it save money like the electrical side?
Well, it's gonna, the whole purpose of this grant, and with the AMI system, is to become more secure in its system because they will link each other to be able to read that. Currently, right now, we only read the electric meters every thirty days, not every, all at once. We have what we call books, and we would just read them every thirty days, as well as just with the water. So that's key to this AMI system, is that we could get a daily read-in, we could see when something is offline, uh, within, within an hour. But if we could hook that up to the water in some cases, which, and again, I'll have to check on the timeframe, we could see when there's high water usage, as opposed to waiting for, could be weeks on end before we notify the person that they have high water usage with that. So it would just make it a more secure, uh, system that we could notify or be in more in touch on if something has failed, if there's some part of the city that is down, we should be able to know that quickly and what parts.
But it's not gonna have quite the financial kickback that it does with the electrical, is what I'm pointing to. We can add the water, we can add the gas, and yeah, there are gonna be some advantages, but it's not gonna be an economic advantage immediately like we would see with the, uh, smart meters with the electricity, because we would actually have reduced electrical use, where water usage is just water usage, and people are gonna tend to use the same amount of water unless they happen to have a leak.
But I think there's, I think that's, yep. You hit it, it's the leak part. You, this past December, those, that cold spell, you know, we had different organizations that had their leaks. Nobody was around to find it out. If you have this system, you'd be able to localize where it is a lot sooner than to drive it around and looking for the water coming out the door, so.
Yeah, personally, I had a, a leak in a, um, a toilet that we don't use in the basement, and I didn't know until I got a very high bill and found out that I had a leak down there. If, if we had a system like this, um, the city would be able to know that, hey, my house, my usage is up a lot, and they could reach out and say, hey, did you change something, or is there, uh, there a problem there?
I, I, I can see the benefit of that, but you can see my, my point, too. It's not gonna have a, it's not gonna have an, a immediate kickback.
Well, it's certainly not gonna stop people from using water.
Right.
But I could tell you, this, we've had several incidences where somebody has had a hose run in the backyard because they don't turn off their water, and the hose freezes and, and then
Right.
starts back up. We noticed that when somebody goes from three units of water to ten units of water.
Right.
But what were those timeframes that we noticed that? You know, if somebody on average uses two units of water right away, that through a, through a twenty-four hour period, again, it's not gonna be full safe, but that could alert us to say, let's at least do a drive-by and check that out with that. So it certainly would be a benefit to our customers to be able to, for, for us to notify them sooner rather than later.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
If, Andy, I guess I'm, I'm gonna add this, if you don't mind. The timeframe for this commitment to this grant that they would like is a tight window, and it is March fifteenth, they would like to have the commitment by. I'm not asking for suspended of rules today, if you are comfortable, we, you could certainly do that, and then we'd be all set. If you just do the first read-in, it passes tonight, then what I've been told is that we would be, um, on the list of possible obligations. However, we would try to ask for a suspension of rules on the second read to get it sooner rather than later, if you guys are comfortable.
I think the questions we asked tonight, if we get those answered, I think we can, you know, I think that's a lot more easy to do on the second read than it is tonight.
I, and I totally agree, that's just, that's why.
We kind of anticipated that.
Yeah, yeah, we, that was anticipated, but just to know sort of our plan, um, and they, they recognize that the, the windows are tight with that. So, but I will answer your questions for that for next, I'll try to get it before next meeting.
All right, thank you. All right, um, Marissa, please call the roll.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Okay, that will be moving on to second read. Item K, second readings of ordinances and resolutions. K one, resolution number zero zero five dash two-three. A resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds in excess of fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing cardiac monitors and all necessary pertinences for the City of Napoleon Fire Department, and to award said purchase to Stryker Sales Corporation, and declaring an emergency. You have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Thank you.
Yes, Council President, um, as we've discussed in the past, this is a replacement of three cardiac monitors and defibrillators, um, and there are no changes.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, Marissa, please call roll.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
All right, item K two, ordinance number zero zero six dash two-three, and ordinance creating the non-bargaining position of Parks and Recreation Facility Manager for the City of Napoleon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
I'll motion.
Second.
Andy? There are no changes to this, okay, ordinance. Anyone have any additional questions or comments?
I just wanted to state, if you don't mind, that, uh, that I agreed last, um, last meeting with Ross about the consistency of bringing new positions, um, trying to maybe come up with a process, better process of doing that, um, during budget discussion or before budget discussion, but I do think that in this case, Molly had some good points about, um, that it was discussed at the time, we decided to put it on the back burner for a bit and bring it forward now, and, um, and it's, uh, it's paid out of that budget specifically. So I, I don't have a problem being in favor of it.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I also basically agree with the need for this position. Question I have is, in the past, not with the Parks Department, but with federal departments, we've approved positions, but then not filled them. Is it a possibility that the position could be approved and not filled until the next budget? Is that a possibility, or because of the way this is written, that is not a possibility?
I will let.
Creating the position is what the legislation is doing.
Yeah. So, so that possibility is there.
Yes.
It, it doesn't mean that he has to fill the position right now, but Tony could fill the position if he wanted to.
That's correct.
And last meeting, I think, Brittany was talking about that this is potentially filling a half a position that we already have. Which is a little bit different as well. Tony, do you have anything to add at all?
Uh, no, not anything more than I've already discussed. You know, the timing of it now, it really will end up being probably just funded fifty percent, because that probably won't happen until May and June. So that would alleviate some budget concerns if there are any. So, uh, who I, would I wanna fill that position, uh, this year? Yes, I would, but certainly if the decision made that I have to, you know, along the next year, very much possible as well.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Council President, if I could just add, again, I, I believe, I agree that there probably should be maybe a more defined process of when these were brought forward, but just as a reminder, again, during the budget process, this is one of the, uh, luxury items, I'll call it, or something, the wish list that were cut and said to be brought back. So now here's the time that it's being brought back. The other thing that I would state about this is this would be paid a hundred percent out of the rec fund, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I've looked before, um, and the rec fund carryover balance has increased a pretty good fair share, and I, even as a finance director, I'd be comfortable if it passed, say, today, that if you filled it tomorrow, it would be fine budget-wise.
We didn't kill it, we just said, bring us back a job description, I think.
The, yes, I mean, it was, it's a...
It wasn't a no, it was a, let's do a little more research before we say yes.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Just to make sure I'm remembering it the same way, so that's all.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't, yeah, it wasn't one of the things that's like, no, and don't bring it back.
Right, right, yeah.
And more research.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Ross?
No.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Okay, that will move on to third read. Item K three, ordinance number zero zero seven dash two-three, and ordinance amending ordinance number zero seven seven dash two-two regarding compensation of the City of Napoleon IT Specialist and IT Administrator Positions for the year twenty twenty-three, and declaring an emergency.
Motion?
Second.
Andy?
Yes, Council President, this, uh, ordinance increases the wage rates for both the IT Specialist and the IT Administrator. There are no changes.
Thank you. Have any, uh, questions or comments?
They're not retroactive to January first, are they? They just, we just have to be going forward, correct?
Going forward.
Going forward, okay.
Yep, that's right.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, Marissa, please call the roll.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Epstein?
Lauren?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that will move on to third read. Item L, third readings of ordinances and resolutions, we have none. Item M, good as a city. M one is discussion or action to accept the rates for the Henry County South Joint Ambulance District, Freedom Township, Napoleon Township, Harrison Township, and the Village of Florida. Andy?
Uh, yes, Council President, um, we met, uh, Safety and Human Resource Committee met on February twenty-third with the townships, and we had a South Trent Ambulance District. Um, I felt it was a really good meeting, uh, some good communication took place. They obviously, uh, have had some concerns about, um, number one, the turnover, uh, in some of the ranks here. Both Chief Bowen and myself assured them that for the foreseeable future, we will, uh, have, maintain some stability. I think they felt good about that. Uh, and they also, a couple of them, uh, expressed that they were fearful that there were some comments made in the past that, hey, we're here to protect Napoleon, and that's our job. I also assured them that because with any contract, if we provide, if we have a contractual agreement to cover them, they are as important to us as our own. So we will, um, certainly make sure that they are covered and provide the same safety services that we provide to our own residents in the city. So I thought it was a good meeting. Um, the rates are shown, uh, those are quarterly rates that you can see at the bottom there. But they didn't really have any issues with those whatsoever. They understand the formula, it's a rather complex formula and how those are generated. Uh, those are actually based off of twenty twenty-three actual, or twenty twenty-two actual numbers. And then next year, uh, they'll be based off this year's numbers, so. They didn't have any problems with those, and we just ask that legislation be drafted accordingly. Well, we will ask for, once that is brought, brought forth, a suspension of rules and an emergency clause so that we can get those enacted by April first, um, so we can be in line with the contract.
If I may add, add to this one other item, which doesn't directly relate to this, but does indirectly relate to this. Uh, as Andy talked about, you know, communication issues have been some concerned in the past. One thing we have decided to do is, I guess, at one point prior to my time here, that they used to meet with the townships more often than once or twice a year. So we are talking about meeting with those townships on a quarterly basis, like February, May, et cetera, et cetera. So not the same necessarily meetings that your finance and budget would meet, but the off months. And I think that will improve the communication issue considerably, and I think Kevin was in favor of that also.
That's actually in the contract to meet every quarterly.
But it wasn't happening.
I was surprised that we hadn't, I know from my twelve years here prior to this, we were very faithful about quarterly meetings, but they seem to think that COVID played a part in that, um, which I completely understand, but they are more than interested in getting back to quarterly, quarterly meetings, so.
As I say, even before COVID, in my eight years here, my, only my first year did I have quarterly meetings with that, uh, with that group. So I don't know, it changed when the previous city manager was here, so it, but I think that's a help with the communication in general, considerably.
Yeah, sure.
We're a customer service organization, that's a good way to do it. I'm sorry, Dr. Dave, I mean, you got me off.
I, you got me off. I would like to add that, uh, if the meeting did go well, it seemed like they were a lot happier. Part of that is due to Acting Fire Chief Joel Fry doing a fantastic job on, uh, presenting the numbers. They wanted to see some numbers of what were our expenses were and, and how we were doing things, and when we showed them the numbers, they were a lot happier. Then they had something that they had in their hands, they could look at, that was concrete. Uh, also, Kevin played a large role in that, too. There were a lot, you could just see, there were a lot of people that were a lot happier because they could, they could look at the numbers and then it feel like they were getting, taken advantage of.
Good. Any other questions or comments? All right, we need a, a motion to direct the law director to draft legislation.
Second.
Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken? Yes.
Item M two, discussion or action, award of bid for the South Side Intercepted INI Reduction Project, we consider the street sanitary sewer from Third Street to Apian Street. Who would like this one?
I will, uh, allow Chad to speak on this.
Welcome, Chad, it's been a while.
Yeah. Like a bad rash, I keep coming back. We did open bids on this last Tuesday at the Commissioner's office. That was due to the fact that we were able to acquire a second grant, uh, through the CDBG program. Uh, the grants are listed on the memo, I do apologize, I made a mistake in what I listed. Uh, the OPWC grant was actually two hundred and sixty thousand, the three hundred and twenty-five was a different grant for a different project. So we got two hundred and sixty thousand dollars through OPWC, the additional three hundred thousand through CDBG, and if you recall, we've discussed this project for a couple of years, this grant was out there, we tried to go after it, we did get it. So the engineer's estimate on the project is seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. Received two bids, one valid bid from Brian Excavating at six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty dollars and fifty cents. Uh, it's my recommendation to, uh, accept, uh, the award to work project to Brian Excavating in that amount. The completion date for this project is October twenty-eighth. I would expect, uh, work to begin late spring or early summer.
And we've had, um, Brian Excavating in here recently, um, what projects did they do?
Uh, they did the work down at the pump station to close the SSO, that was their most recent, who's gonna help me?
Park.
They did the sanitary sewer on Euclid a few years back, they did the water line on the Wellstead. Um, they did the water line and lead service removal, and we did Hobson Street. They're, they, they've proven to be a very reliable contractor. They also come to town and... They also come to town periodically when we have emergency sewer tap repairs at residences. We've been calling them quite frequently to come in and do those, and they're very responsive. They keep one of the cleanest job sites of any contractor we have in town, and they never argue. They're great for it.
Great. Have any questions or comments? Need a motion to award the bid?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
All right, that has been approved. Item three, discussion or action, award of bid for the 2023 miscellaneous streets improvement project. Once again, I will refer to the professional. You were right. Back already.
Yeah. Last Wednesday, we opened bids for the 2023 miscellaneous street improvement project. Once again, on this project, we received one valid bid, and it's listed there from Helms and Sons Excavating Incorporated. In the memo, I listed the base bid, which includes Wayne Park Drive, Scott Street, Union Street, and Durham. We have some alternate bids we included in the project, I want to make sure I explain this clearly. In the budget for the project, we have enough funding to cover the base bid and alternate one, and half of alternate bid two. We reached out to the county commissioners, alternate, alternate bid number two is the canal base. They are interested in covering thirty-six thousand of that cost. They have not voted yet, but we received a verbal. My recommendation is to approve the base bid and alternate bid two, and alternate, or alternate bid one and alternate bid two pending the commissioner's approval. If the commissioners deny it, we do not have enough money in our budget to cover the alternate bid two. We'd still be able to do one. Alternate bid one would be Malmi Lane, it's a dead-end street off of Small Me. I'm confident the commissioners will approve it, but I don't have to vote. So I would ask for a conditional approval of alternate bid two as part of the award of the project.
And Malmi Lane is right off the project, they're gonna do the summer for us anyways, off of one ten, right?
State rubble and ten's going to be done by the state. They have not bid that project yet, that is a separate line item in the engineering budget. But we were looking for small streets that didn't need major work, but yet the pavement was in bad shape.
It'd be beneficial for that contractor though to bid on this other project.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
The same thing with the canal base, right? The people that do Scott Street, your stuff is here, just make a right turn.
And I believe that's the reason, my estimate on the canal basin portion, I believe, was ninety thousand dollars, and you can see there, they bid seventy-two. I suspect it's because Scott Street was guaranteed in the base bid, there's no mobilization, they drive in there, do the work, and then get back on Scott Street and do that piece. Helms and Sons Excavating Incorporated, they're the ones that paved at Bonaparte, Ken James Court, they paved Haley, if you recall, we had Haley sitting there with that bed trench for a while, because we had to let it sit for a winter. They came back the following year and got that paved. I believe that's the only project they've paid for us, was the twenty nineteen or twenty twenty miscellaneous streets, but other than rambling some of their employees a little bit, we didn't have major issues with them, so.
Thank you. You gonna make the motion?
I'll make that motion pending the commissioner's approval.
Second.
All right, Marissa, please call the roll.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Abstain?
Lauren?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, that has been awarded. Item M four, discussion or action, wastewater treatment plant roof replacement.
As Council President, I will defer this evening to our Wastewater Superintendent Jeremy Oakley.
Welcome, Jeremy.
How's everybody doing?
Good.
So what we want to do is replace the roofs on the four existing buildings. As you know, in the project, there's two new buildings that are having to be moved also. What I'd like to do is have the same contractor replace the four existing buildings. We've got a bid from them, and it actually came in lower than the second bid I have, so I'm pretty confident they're, probably just because they're familiar with the site, they're gonna be there all right. I'd just like to kind of have the same continuity through all of them.
Yeah, right. As you can see, there was eighty-five thousand dollars budgeted for this, and the bid came in at fifty-four, three seventy-one. So this will require legislation, because the project was on the master bid list, but the vendor was not listed on the master vendor list, so we'll have to get some legislation done.
Which, which four building are we doing?
To do the lab building, the lower building, ground building, and generator building.
They all got a metal roof?
No, this is all block rubber roof.
Okay. I like the idea of having them all age at the same time, that's makes a lot of sense to me, so.
Anybody have any other questions or comments? Thank you, Jeremy. Need a motion to direct the law director to draft legislation.
So moved. Second.
Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes. Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
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 Okay, that has been approved. Moving on to item M five, discussion or action, update to council on APPA DC rally. Kevin?
Thank you, Council President. What I'm passing around is just an update of what all took place last week at the APPA Legislative Rally in Washington DC. I just think it's important that I at least come back to council and report what all took place and what we discussed. There was five of us that were there, it was myself, Mayor Mazel, and then council members Baliruki, Durham, and Sinclair, which you were all three on the Electric Committee, correct? And OMEA representative, and I was there because of the AMP board. So we were there on two fronts, and again, I'm not gonna read this to you, I'm just gonna just say some highlights on this. We represented the City of Napoleon, we also represented AMP during their meetings. So we went as the City of Napoleon and discussed the four items that are on the front of page one, which was about, you know, are water costs going up, increase for the chemical costs? There was a huge question on EPA, on lead piping, sewer grants, and also trying to get grants for street repair with that. We were able to meet with Congressman Latta himself, that's why you'll see pictures here of him being in there, but we were also able to meet with Legislative Assistant Wes King from Senator Sherrod Brown's office. And as of note, attempts to set up the meeting in J.D. Vance's office was unsuccessful, and not just for us. So as it was told there at the rally, his office might have some learning to do. I'll just put it that way with that. On the second page, we were part of the officials from twenty-seven different AMP communities that were there. When we met with them as representing AMP, they had their talking points that they wanted to talk about, and those topics are discussed on that second page. But I just think it's, it's fair that we report back to everybody what all was discussed and what took place there, because it does cost us a bit of money to go. It was well worth it, in my opinion, when we could go to their turf and meet with our legislatures there. Our next step, and I put that down on the tail end, is basically to go and send out thank you notes to those that we met, and I believe that we should start developing those relationships with our two senators in their Northwest District offices, which is up in Toledo. So that should be our next step for that. Just a couple things, the pictures that you see on the front, you see Mayor Mazel sitting right next to Congressman Latta, right in his office. The picture of all of us there, that was at the Capitol Building. So again, we got to go on their turf, and then on the last page, that was the City of Napoleon, as well as other AMP communities, where we talked to Mr. Latta about AMP issues with that. Just one final note, and if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. I could tell you that Mayor Mazel led the charge on our talking points, he represented the City of Napoleon very well, and our, and our three council members, they also represented the City of Napoleon very well. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Kevin, appreciate that.
I'd like to add that Kevin also represented us.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks for the benefits I have in Congress, on Latta, you know, he's never on recess, you know, he may not be in DC during the day, but he's in his district someplace. Just having breakfast at Hamler or having something someplace else, or wherever he's at, he's in his district all the time, he's very approachable that way, and been fortunate to work, work with him for a long time, so sit in his office, it makes it really easy, he just makes it really easy to be in his office with him, so, but thank you, Kevin, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Kevin, when you, talking about the next steps and sending the thank you notes, were you planning on doing that yourself, or?
What I was planning on doing is I was just gonna send an email to them, and I would CC all you on that.
Okay.
And it needs to be done probably by tomorrow, since we were there Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of last week, time slips away from me. And I will just say, even though we did not get to meet with Sherrod Brown, it's hard to get to meet with Senator specifically, Wes King was very attentive, and, you know, took notes, and understood our points, and, and made sure that he was gonna follow up with that. So, but I think it's, it's our duty to at least go back to him.
With that, I think it would be important to do follow-up emails, either once a quarter, with all the talking points that we talked to him about. We've been to plenty of these rallies, and it sometimes just seems like, I think we're making some headway, and they look like they're listening, they took notes, and then maybe not hear anything about it again until we go the next year. But I think on our end, if we would keep it in front of them, at least quarterly, maybe a little bit more, and just, and ask questions, hey, where are we on this? What are your thoughts? Things like that, hopefully we'll get, get some more responses. We can all work together on who wants to do that and when we're gonna do it.
I think we can do that, I think it wouldn't hurt to do a boomerang trip either, city manager and myself or something like that, you know, first flight in, I Detroit to DC early in the morning, last flight back that night, you know, maybe hit all three all in one day, and Marty, or the AMP's legislative person there in DC, I know he's retiring, but he's a lot of good contacts, and, you know, we can always set up an, an email, but also go, there's nothing like, you know, sitting across the table from somebody and going, hey, where are we at with this? And how's the mood of Congress now versus February? Because it's, it's a little different, the dog days versus it is right now.
Right.
Just, just a thought, we can do that, too, so. Can't hurt.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'll just add, I think the relationships that are built while we're on this trip, especially with the AMP community, are so valuable.
Yeah.
Just going back to the grant application earlier in the meeting, having those connections where we can reach out and ask questions, very beneficial, so, great trip all around. And again, thank you, Jason and Kevin, for representing the city very well.
And thanks to Roxanne for getting everything ready for it. That's a gargantuan task in itself, making sure we're on the right flights and hotels and things all set up, appreciate that.
All right, go around the table here, and I'll start with Andy.
I have nothing, Mr. David.
Okay, Billy?
I've had one request for update on a litigation item, so I would ask for two minutes, two minutes of your time, pending your imminent litigation, please.
All right, and Dr. Dave?
I would just like to say congratulations to our new fire chief, I think he's gonna do a great job, and I'm looking forward to working with him. That's it.
And Ken?
Nothing.
All right, Dan?
Nothing.
And Mr. Mayor?
I'll go dovetail with what Dr. Dave said about Chief Bowen. Went to breakfast, like I said, in Hamler on, on Saturday morning, quite a few people there, and the safety services were, said some really nice things to him, congratulated him a lot, and people at the, you know, the chief and captain level, and other organizations also are very happy that, that he's our chief, so I think we did a really good job there. You may have saw in the paper this weekend, we have a state title winner here in the great city of Napoleon, a freshman bowler. Invited her to come, coached family to come, hopefully next council meeting, present her with a proclamation. Typically, what, what we have done is, if you're an individual, it's a two-time state champion, get your name on the sign, and team is one time, so this is her first, she's a freshman, hopefully you can do it again later, then she put a sign up that she's, she's here from the great city of Napoleon. I need a volunteer for the Board of Zoning Appeals, Jordan McBride has, has fulfilled that, so just ask that he gets appointed to that board, Board of Zoning Appeals, Jordan McBride, for that. Not saving ahead. We'll approve that, don't have to, Ken, if you want.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And, yeah, congratulations to Captain Bowen, I think he'll do great things in the city and work well with everyone, so I'm looking forward to that.
Kevin, that's the same thing, couldn't tell you on time to say it myself.
All right, Ross?
Nothing for me?
Lori?
Just also congratulations to Chief Bowen. That's it.
Molly?
If there are no agenda items, I'm going to cancel the municipal properties meeting for next Monday.
Mulligan, I'm canceling the electric committee meeting for next Monday also.
Mulligan, I'm canceling the water. All right, is there something going on?
There they go again.
Anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
All right, Kevin?
Councilman Bear, just to let you know, the only thing I have is the Finance and Budget Committee will meet on March twenty-seventh, and we would be discussing first quarter budget adjustments.
All right.
I know you would not want to miss that.
Thank you, Mr. City Finance Director.
Is that it, Kevin?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, can I have a motion to go into executive session for, did you say pending litigation?
Pending or imminent litigation.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Marissa, please call the roll.
Dr. Dave?